So we'll call to order the December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Springville Planning Commission. First on our list of things to do would be to approve the agenda. Do we have a motion for the agenda? We have a motion to approve the agenda and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The agenda is passed. We have minutes from November twenty-eighth's meeting. Are there any changes that haven't already been brought to the attention of people? I found just one on line two eighty-six and the first three words are repeated. And emphasis is awesome, but if I didn't have to. Yeah, I'm talking to myself and it's great. I agree to myself there, too.
You ask yourself.
Yes.
Chair Ellison asks Chairman Ellison.
Who didn't answer? Okay, do we have any other changes for the minutes? Or a motion?
Move to approve the minute.
With the change?
Pardon?
With the change?
With the change.
Okay, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The minutes are now approved. Okay, we have no items on the consent agenda tonight or for the administrative session, but we do have two items in the legislative session, which will each have a public hearing for those items and will address those at the appropriate time. The first item is Springville Community Development requests amendments to Springville Code Title eleven, Chapter two, Article three, Board of Adjustment to comply with Title ten, Chapter nine, A, Part seven, UCA Appeal Authority and Variances. And we have a presentation by Carla. It's a very official presentation.
Yes. Okay, so this is the one that we continued from last week. And this is really kind of just, I feel to a certain extent, it's one of those distinctions without a difference kind of things. So in two thousand and seventeen, the Utah State Legislature made some changes in the the Appeal Authority Invariances that cities had to just had to identify a distinct administrative land use authority for appeals. And that had always just been a Board of Adjustment. But they kind of, they gave cities a little bit more leeway. Whereas before there was like you do a Board of Adjustment and that is it. They gave some leeway to having it be one person, having it be subset of their planning commission there. And so they gave a little bit of leeway in that. Springville has always had a Board of Adjustment and it has worked well. And so all this does is designate the Board of Adjustment as the Administrative Appeal Authority, Land Use Appeal Authority. And it's just part of our efforts to make sure that our language is the same as in state code, so that there's no confusion. The other thing it does is we clarified when the decisions by the Board will become effective. That wasn't totally clear in our previous ordinance. And then also the state codified a timeframe for an applicant to file an appeal. States can, cities can set their own as long as it's not any less than ten. And we just went with that, that state range of ten days. And so those are the only things that were really changed, other than referring to the Board of Adjustment as the Appeal Authority. So that's about it. Any questions?
Yeah, I had just one. I saw in here that, which is really just a restate of what was already there of they do not consider zoning variances. But in two, I don't know which page it says, that on page one, two, three, page three with parentheses two, that paragraph. Under the limitations of the Board's powers.
Yes.
Says that they can only make decisions applying to the zoning ordinances request for variances. So does that mean that there are variances and that the Board of Adjustment should be looking at?
So, yes. So the city, so the Board of Adjustment can look at variances and make sure that that because the state is very clear on when a variance can be granted, you just are not allowed to grant a use variance. And so you, if someone comes to you and says, the hillside overlay zone is, I should be granted a variance from that. And based upon what that homeowner or that applicant states, you determine, looking at the state code and what is very specifically outlined, whether or not that person should be granted variance from the zoning ordinance. But you, someone can't come and say, well, I really want to use this property that's zoned residential. It would be really perfect for me to run a bed and breakfast out of. And that would be a use. And so you would not be able to grant a variance from a use only from a land use ordinance. Does that make sense? Is that clear?
Maybe.
Clarify that for me.
Clear could be variances are typically related to geometric or numerical parameters of the development of the site. Like a ten-foot setback or a thirty percent lot coverage. The last variance we did for kind of a house was the house all the way at the top of Spring Oak. As you drive up Center Street, you see the one perched up there on the stilts. We gave it a front yard variance, or it was granted a front yard variance, because without the front yard variance, the lot was basically unbuildable. So they met all those criteria, but you can't grant a variance that requests a use that's not permitted in the zone. So you can't say, oh, I want a variance to do a smoke shop where a smoke shop isn't permitted. Those, the use table in the zone is not subject to, not variable.
Yeah, so if someone wanted to do that, they would have to go through a zone text amendment process rather than, or a zone change, rather than requesting a variance.
Well, it's just geographic space that
Yeah, typically a variance is somehow or the other, the physical aspects of a lot or are are impinging on someone's ability to develop it. And so, and a variance cannot be created by someone. So like if they, if they are like, well, I put this big driveway in and now I can't use the rest of my property. When before that driveway was in, it could have been, then that would not count for a variance.
Variances are always result from a unique circumstance of the property itself. And how that affects the applicant's ability to exercise a property right that they otherwise would be able to exercise in the neighborhood, but are prevented from doing because of some unique characteristic of the property. And then that variance runs with the land.
I get it. That's a good example of the one up on the stilts.
Yeah.
But what about down here in the, in the, I forget what that's, the one by the school down here?
Westfield Central?
I mean, what if, what if they came in asking for variances that could impact? I mean, we know what we've been through down there, right? If they came in asking for some variances, how would those be handled?
They wouldn't have, I can't foresee any way that they would meet the criteria for a variance. Because there is no hardship there, because all those lots are buildable and legal and have been calibrated to the zone. If there was some
Strange.
strange lot that we
Cliff in the backyard.
Like a cliff in the backyard that made that. But all of those lots have been calibrated to, to use the code.
And if someone came in and said, well, I really want a basement and you don't allow basements under four hundred West, I want a variance. That would not fall within the parameters, because they're still able to use the lot to build a home as it was. So that would be something that they would not be granted a variance for. Does that?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. Variance is weird. So anyway.
Right. And, and the word variance is used.
Oh, I know. We have get developers all the time saying, oh, well, I'll just ask for a variance. I'm like, no, you won't. You'll ask for this. But anyway, yeah.
It's not an exception.
Yes, yeah.
Yes. So would it clarify between what's, what we do see in here of variances that we do do and the use variances that they don't do, if there was just a definition that preceded the section that said a use variance is these things?
And I believe it does say that. Let's see. I know that that is in here somewhere where it specifically says that it, you can't.
There is a definition for a variance, but it doesn't distinguish between a use variance and not use variance.
Add something like that.
Yeah, we can. I swear that it is in here somewhere, Karen. I swear it is.
It's just a case where we, where a use variance isn't a thing. So we look at it and don't think we need to write it, but it makes sense that we need to clarify it. Because it's not, it's not clear to everybody that that's what that means.
So in two limit, it actually said appeals may be made, may not consider any. No, that's not it. Yes, we, I will make sure that that is clarified in here for you. Let me do that. This is one of the things that, once again, I read it so many times, I can't, I could be speaking out about the first edition that I looked at, you know.
And it's stuff that's always been there. It's just we're, we're looking at it a little bit more carefully and.
And if we're clarifying, we might as well clarify it, right? That's the whole point. So, yeah. So that's about it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody have any questions? Alrighty. This is a public hearing item. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The public hearing is now open. Anyone who wishes to address the commission is welcome to come forward at this time. Just state your name, your address, and what it is that you'd like to say.
Mindy Wright, eight fifty-three East, one thousand South, Springville. I just want to know, what is, what, who is the Board of Adjustment? What, who is that? Is that a state entity? Is it, is it somebody you guys form that?
No, we are not. Well, I think I'm still an alternate on the Board of Adjustment, but it's a separate board, a city board.
Yes, the mayor appoints them. It's strictly five members.
They don't meet very often, but.
No, they only kind of meet on an ad needed basis. And the the establishment of it, and all those elected, are in its first section, eleven, two, three, oh, one.
Okay, cool.
You can take this if you want.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
And you can see, you can see, you can see who's on the board and what their background is. It's, it's pretty, I think it's a pretty decent group of people that meet and have those discussions.
And that's who they appeal to.
Under those circumstances outlined in there.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah. If you ever want to go to a Board of Adjustment meeting, if it happens, it can be interesting and long.
Or uninteresting.
And long.
Not seeing anyone else come to the podium. I move to close the public hearing.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the hearing is now closed for item number one. Any discussion or questions from the commissioners on this item? Or a motion? I think it's Mike's turn for a motion.
Am I the one that missed it? I'm looking for the motion here. Well, I'll move to approve the Springville Community Development Request Amendment to Springville Code Title, Title eleven, Chapter two, Article three, Board of Adjustments to Comply with the Title ten, Chapter of nine, A, Part seven, UCA Appeal Authority Invariances.
Okay, do we have a second?
There was no recommend in there.
There wasn't. Would you like to amend his motion?
Sure. I'll make an amendment to recommend the approving this motion.
Okay.
This is where it gets confusing if you want to do it this way.
It does.
Because now we need a, a second on the amended motion, and then we need a vote on the amended motion before we return to considering the motion, the amended motion.
I can continue the motion.
You can withdraw your motion.
No, we, it's, I mean, it's not complicated. We just have to go through a couple steps.
I second the amended motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All in favor of the now amended original motion?
Oh, we didn't get a, did we get a second?
I thought you just seconded it.
I seconded the amended motion.
Okay, well, who wants to second the, the new one? Okay, now we can vote on it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. The second item is Springville Community Development seeks for a recommendation to adopt the sixteen hundred South area plan. We're looking forward to a wonderful discussion on this one.
I'm here with Kelly Gilman and Cooper Parsons from CRSA, who are our lead consultant on the project, and they'll be joining me in the presentation today. So I just wanted to start by reading the intent statement that we see in the staff report. I think it gives us a quick overview of why we're doing what we're doing. The intent of the sixteen hundred South Corridor Plan is to plan for a community of lasting value composed of walkable neighborhood units centered on commercial civic amenities, connected by a complete network of transportation and open spaces with an intentional focus on design and character. Now, the process so far started with procurement of our consultant team in the spring of two thousand and twenty-one. We then had a big project kickoff meeting in combination with some other planning endeavors in the area in August. Some of you, I think, were present for some of those meetings. Then we reviewed the initial scenarios with the city council in October and through the rest of twenty-one. And then presented recalibrated scenarios for council consideration in the first half of two thousand and twenty-two. Then we spent the next year about drafting and refining the plan. And now we're in the last quarter of two thousand and twenty-three, trying to bring this over the finish line with a recommendation from the planning commission tonight. As I mentioned, the team is led by CRSA. They're a planning architecture firm out of Salt Lake that has a long history in, in planning architecture and is actually the, the lead architect on this building on this campus. So they have a history here in Springville. They had a subconsultants avenue consultants, transportation consultancy that was one of the key consultants on UDOT's environmental study for the sixteen hundred South interchange and New Arterial Road. And they also had Downtown Redevelopment Services, which handled the land use analysis and scenario planning. Recent updates, since I've come to you last time, are the first, really, the numbers. Last time we talked, we had some internal disagreement in the plan about the numbers. That has all been resolved, and we now have a page which gives us our max development yield. So the maximum development of across these different categories that we anticipate the plan could possibly yield. And out of over nine hundred acres of total area in the project there, or in the planning area, there's six hundred and fifty about acres usable after we've netted out streets, utility rideaways, corridors, public uses, open space and parks, trails, those types of uses. It yields forty, about forty-seven hundred total housing units at densities ranging from six to eighteen units per acre. And has the possibility of yielding over five hundred, over five million square feet of commercial development, which at that yield would create about six thousand one hundred jobs. This would result based on analysis of projected household sizes for the different types of units that the plan contemplates to develop this yield, ranging from, you know, small studio apartments up to single-family homes of a regulating population right around ten thousand people. Obviously, there's a margin of error there. But from really the eight to twelve thousand range. We had a public meeting for, primarily for neighborhood residents and property owners in the area on Thursday evening. And it was a good, it was a very productive meeting. We had a lot of great discussion comments. The one new comment and concern that I came up with at that meeting was a concern from existing property owners and residents, especially towards the southern part of the planning area, that have existing homes with agricultural uses, whether they have livestock or they're farming or have other types of uses there that are valuable and important to them. They express concern about being pushed out of their land or being pushed out of their use by the encroachment of other uses. So for, for example, if their neighbor sold and there was some apartments built next door, and those people started complaining about the fact that there were cows next door, what would then be their fate? We assured them that generally the city can't and won't come in and stop somebody from doing use that they have a legal right to do, just because someone has moved next to it. And we shared the precedent of the Westfields, all across the Westfields, where we have places like Commissioner Ellingson doesn't have to walk far to see a horse. Actually, or a lot of things, if we go down to Center Street. And, but they asked us to communicate to the council and the planning commission that concern and ask that we include a policy statement in the plan that the city would support existing land uses as the area transitions and allow them to continue, you know, doing the activities on their property that are important to them and are why they're there until they're ready not to do that anymore. So we discussed that briefly with the city council tonight, and they all felt were in support of including a statement like that. So that would be one particular question I put to you tonight is, is there.
So it is written down? Is it when you said, including a statement?
They, we have not put that statement in the plan. We just heard last Thursday that that's what they'd, they'd like, but we have committed to them and committed to the council in the previous meeting to find a place for that statement.
I know we do have a couple of uses in that area that are not particularly friendly to having residential right next to them. I think you saw that those were already in the works of wanting to relocate somewhere else. Am I remembering correctly?
There's no specific plans or word from property owners on that. The two that come to mind when you say that are automobile wrecking yard and a cement batch plant. That's particularly incompatible, but I think some people. I've lived in a neighborhood where there was a school bus yard and the neighbors lamented the five o'clock in the morning backup beep symphony that greeted them all the time. So there may be more. But we're confident that as this area progresses and develops, that many of these uses will find that their property is now worth more than their use and that they would be better off economically to find another place to do that use and be able to sell their property for a premium. And we've generally seen that that's how the market works over the long term. Sometimes it takes a long time and sometimes you've got to hold out. I'm reminded of the flower patch on the corner of Fifth South and State Street in Salt Lake that held out on the corner of the Grand America for twenty years, it felt like. But generally, over time, the market forces Adam Smith's invisible hand kind of result in things changing. But we don't have any solid plans, but the city is definitely interested in helping those property owners. They're facilitating that where there is interest.
Would there be also interest in maybe incrementally changing the zoning to keep that those two from coming together and having those problems?
Expand on that a little bit.
I know, I lost the word I was looking for. So we have the, the crushing plant, right? And if we're going to zone right next to it to be R one-ten, would we wait to change that zoning to R-ten until that's ready to move on, so that we don't build homes next to it and create a, a problem between the two uses?
That's a really interesting question. In the case of the materials processing and storage overlay, that is a unique case, because it is both regulated by the land use title and the business license title. And so one creates a land use right, and the other is just purely regulatory. So the the business licensing ordinance currently lists a specific distance you have to be away from a single family or from residential at all to be able to conduct that operation. So it would be interesting process to determine whether if a neighboring property owner sold for residential development, if that would then force the cessation of those material processing and storage uses or operations, not the right to the use, but the ability to operate on that, on that parcel.
And would that then be something that would be legal to do or ethical to do in forcing a change by putting someone in noncompliance?
That's definitely something we would consider a, as we move, but it's also something, as we move ahead, but it's also something that was very clear to the the people that are currently operating in that zone, that their rights to operate were bifurcated between a land use entitlement and an operational standard. But that's a good question. I, I don't anticipate the area immediately adjacent to that piece will be the first to go, because it has no access and it's environmentally sensitive. But that's definitely something to consider as we move forward in the process. And what Kelly will talk a lot about is the, the zoning and the regulations that will come after we adopt the plan to really implement it. And those type of transitional requirements or phasing sequencing elements could definitely be handled in greater detail in effect in the, in the zoning. That's my introduction. I'm now give the time to Kelly to take you through the, the structure of the plan and how it's all going to work into form-based codes and regulations on the backend.
Okay, good evening. Thank you for working with us over the past couple of years to get to this point. We believe we've got a plan put together that has met the needs of the community. We've, as was mentioned, had a number of public meetings and and having just met with the council in their work session, we think we're, we're, we're close to having this ready for your review and approval this evening. Just briefly to walk you through the document and how it works, as was alluded to, this is one of the early steps in getting the city ready for development in the area. This is a, a policy document. It has certain recommendations in it, but it doesn't have all the details needed for development to occur in a logical manner. But we've set up the document in a way that will hopefully help you step through that in a, in a fairly straightforward process. I won't belabor the introduction chapters too long, but as a, just as a reminder, there are some introduction and context chapters in this document that demonstrate what the study area looked like as we started our process. It walks through some of the demographics that have been in place in the state for the past few years. And there's also a synopsis of the public input. All of this information is relevant as it helps set up the vision for the study area. I'll breeze through it quickly, but leave it for your review. This document itself, we envision the actual implementation of this policy to be completed as a form-based code as a next step. It isn't the only way you could implement this document. You could adopt different zoning codes, do, use design guidelines. There's lots of tools that could be used to implement the recommendations. But we believe the form-based code will be the right choice for you, because it is such a large area of, of land between the corridor itself and the property all the way down to the southern border. With most of it being vacant, adopting a brand-new form-based code, either as an overlay to the current zoning or as a replacement to the current zoning, would give you a lot of flexibility of exactly how the development would look. The, the Wasatch Front Regional Council and the Mountain Line Association of Governments have a, a template for form-based code. And we've chosen to, to build this document in chapters that mirror the chapters that are in that code. And we've chosen to, to build this document in chapters that mirror the chapters that are in that code. I'm going to walk you through those, uh, briefly. And the idea is that as you work through, if you choose to work through that form-based code template, this document would match that document fairly closely and be easier to implement. Uh, these, let me make that a little bit larger for you. This, this table lists the different chapters that are in the form-based code template. This particular doc, document, uh, spends quite a bit of time on chapter one, uh, chapters five, two and six, which are more general descriptions of development. Chapters three and four are actually very detailed, detail-oriented documents that, that provide a lot of information on exactly how buildings are constructed and used. And so there is a lot of information in this plan because there's a lot of work to be done on that in the next phase.
For the benefit of some in the room, could you explain what form-based code is?
Yes, great question. So, uh, for those who may be, um, familiar with typical zoning in most cities in this area, uh, the, the code is, uh, generally describes, uh, uses that are allowed in certain areas of the city. And uses are generally separated by zone geographically. In a form-based code, we're less concerned about the use, we're concerned about what the use looks like. Uh, the example I often use is a car dealership. I think if I say car dealership, most people think of the large mini-acre asphalt lot with some tall poles, maybe a little building in the corner and then lots and lots of cars. That is a common way of developing a car dealership. However, you can also do a car dealership as five or six cars that sit in a nice showroom in a small, um, corner office underneath a residential, uh, multi-use building. Not very common around here, but it's common in big cities on the East Coast. A Tesla's there, for example, in Washington DC, five or six cars in a showroom. Um, that's a use that, you know, in a, in a, in a traditional zoning cor- code would not be allowed in most districts. However, under a form-based code, you may decide it's okay to be, to occur in a mixed-use district because it looks and, looks and feels like any other use that might be in that corner shop. Uh, so to try and recap that, um, we're more concerned about the form and look of the development than the use of the development. And that's not to say that there still aren't use requirements, but they're not the focus. Does that answer the question? I'm gonna scroll through again, most of this introduction. Uh, we'll point out as a reminder, uh, the, the plan, uh, initial focus was on the orange shaded area. On the slide, that is the primary study area, which is the sixteen hundred South Corridor. And that corresponds with what we call the Boulevard Place Type. And I'll explain the place type in a moment. All the area to the south of that is the secondary study area, which is a, a different place type. And this is some of that introduction context that we, uh, mentioned earlier that goes into formulate the plan. I'm, I'm gonna scroll through this fairly quickly. I think it's been reviewed in the past. I will note, uh, here on the transportation section, the traffic volumes that are shown here uh, come from the EIS that UDOT completed a couple of years ago for the new corridor. Uh, these are numbers that go into the planning of the study area. Uh, the blue roads that you see here are from the UDOT study and they don't match exactly what are in our recommendations. Uh, we've suggested a slightly different road pattern for the roads that connect into the corridor. And you'll see why in a few moments. Again, the demographics which are used to help formulate the plan. Public input has been noted. A number of meetings have been held and a lot of great in, input has been provided to help generate the recommendations. Uh, the first set of recommendations can be seen with this, uh, first regulating plan. The regulating plan that you see in this document will, will be the basis of the form-based code in your next implementation step. This is a general layout of land uses that are envisioned for the corridor. The land uses generally follow the existing zones that you have in your city code. So when we say something like low density or medium density residential, if you are familiar with what the densities are in your current code, uh, you would be fairly familiar with what is being recommended for densities in this plan. The regulating plan also indicates, uh, road layout, locations, trails, open spaces, and is meant to, uh, as you adopt this plan, provide the teeth that you need to work with landowners to locate those new roads across the area in a way that is beneficial to the city and to the landowners. As we move down through the document, uh, we then move to the larger study area. The initial recommendations for the corridor were, went through a process of discussion with the city council and the planning commission. And then we extrapolated the preference into the rest of the study area to the south of the corridor. So that second area that's in the blue outline, uh, did not go through the same full detailed number crunching that the main corridor did just due to availability of funds. Uh, but we used the recommendations that came from that to set up the land uses south of the corridor. And just as a quick point, uh, this city boundary that you see with the blue line doesn't matter for a city boundary exactly. We've tried to rationalize your city boundary with Spanish Fork, which will take some negotiation with them to implement. Uh, but there were some reasons why changing the city boundary a little bit to line up with, uh, different road and trail patterns would make sense. So something that you'll need to, uh, work through in, uh, coming years. Now, on the right side of this page is where we list the general uses that are recommended by district type. And this is also something that can be, uh, changed as you work through the calibration process. But as an example, and this doesn't list car dealership in it specifically, although it could, um, you know, service, you know, general neighborhood services would be allowed in most of those zones, but what those services look like is not defined. So you might think of a general service as a large maverick gas station. Doesn't have to be a large maverick gas station. It could be a small gas station with a single pump and a swig next to it. There's all kinds of different ways that they could be formed. Whether or not that is the right use for that district is up to you to decide. Um, but we haven't dictated what the form of those uses are at this point. They're just recommended uses in the district.
Can we ask questions now?
Of course.
So, and maybe this is a question for you, uh, Josh. Um, so when we, when the decision was made to not to put any more, I'm thinking of this specific example you're giving of services, no more, um, gas stations on this, on Main Street, that didn't eliminate all services. So in this situation, that, you know, you could, you could limit the number of certain services, but still allow other services to be here.
These are very broad land use categories. These aren't anywhere near the level of specificity that we have in our current code.
Yeah. I, I assume that, but I'm just making sure that, that the possibility exists.
Yes, and.
Some while allow others.
Absolutely. And that's something you would entirely handle through the coding process.
Okay.
Uh, cause I don't know if I made it clear as I was introducing the plan that this plan doesn't create any land use entitlement. It doesn't change any zoning. It doesn't actually change the general plan land use map the way we're adopting it, but it expresses the vision and intent of the city as we move forward into, uh, developing and adopting zoning for the area.
That makes sense.
So there's a lot of subsequent.
More of a strategic high-level.
Exactly. Yes. Thank you.
Is the only spot where there's medium density housing up on the left corner next to the yellow and green?
So you're talking about the orange?
Yeah, yeah. One of the two oranges.
So I don't know if you can see the cursor very well, but is it this orange that you're?
Uh, left of there.
Over here.
Yep. Is that the only one of that color?
I believe Cooper, correct me if I'm wrong, is that meant to be the same orange as the orange over here? I think it's. Yeah, there, there may be no.
Yeah, cause it's similar, it's similar to the one kind of in the center, right? Right below, right below there. If you look, that there's this division of the two colors of oranges right there. It looks like maybe there's another color on the ba- behind it or something that's causing a. Cause it's behind the yellow as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, that could be the fairgrounds.
Yeah. I think for cle- for clarity would be a good idea.
It, it would. Where's the mixed-use lifestyle then? Is it the blob at the bottom?
Yeah, the, uh.
I think so. I'm not sure.
That's this piece down here that has the two green eyes. Looks kind of like a green, orange monster with green eyes. That's this piece down here.
Okay. What is mixed-use lifestyle?
So I have some pictures of that and I'll show you.
We'll get to that.
Just a few minutes, yes. But that is a key difference between these two areas. So, um, the area in orange, the main corridor is the corridor place type, which is more of a, you know, cars are gonna be moving back and forth through fairly quickly. Whereas the place type to the south, we, although the districts are similar, we feel that it's more of a place where people are gonna go as a destination, a gathering spot. So that's, there's a little bit of a different character between the two place types, even though the land use districts have some similarities across the two. Okay. So now, again, so the Boulevard Community Place Type and the Town Center Place Type are, are defined here on these pages in this chapter six. And the, this matches the vision that was approved previously. And we've given you a couple of case studies here of what the, the two place types are. This Bridgeport Way University Place, Washington case study is an example of a busy five-lane roadway that was improved to have some better, uh, amenities associated with it. So there's kind of a before and after there where you had a very typical suburban, uh, development pattern. And on the right, the, the city worked with, I believe it's a state route to implement some upgraded medians, sidewalks and furnishings. Uh, so a much nicer look and feel and it, and as you get to more of the urban nodes, I'll kind of zoom in a little bit here as well. Um, much more emphasis placed on the pedestrian amenities at key intersections, upgraded sidewalks, plantings, furnishings and so forth. Uh, so again, it's a, it's a place primarily where people are moving through versus the second case study, which is here locally. If you've visited the Holiday Town Center in Salt Lake County, uh, you, you may be familiar with the plaza the city built that catalyzed private development, including a Harman's grocery store and some other, uh, small boutique shops and restaurants, which is what we envision the town center at the southern end of the city looking more like. That'd be the block. Yep.
An attractive block.
Attractive blob. And the reason there's two green eyes in that blob is because, uh, we recommend that there be some kind of town square associated, whether it's a, uh, a paved gathering place for a market or a grassy lawn of some kind, some kind of public space that is part of that gathering area. Uh, it could be a park or it could be a.
Second splash pad.
Could be a splash pad. Any number of those things.
Uh, could it, could it be used for, um, you know, a, a food truck roundup, something like that? They could do that for that?
Yep. Okay. So then after you define the place type in the code, you define the land use districts. And this is where I'm gonna start answering your question about what the different districts mean. We've created this land use district table and I'll zoom in a little bit as well. Uh, the pictures at the top of the table are a general representation of the type of structure that you would expect in that district. But it does not define exactly how those, how those buildings should be formed. So where we say two to three stories, it'll be up to you to decide whether it is two, whether it is three. And if it is three, how high are those three stories? Uh, sometimes a three-story building might have a, a very tall ground floor because it has a really nice open retail environment and the upper two floors are just typical office spaces. Or maybe, uh, all three floors are typical office space heights and so it's a shorter three-story building. The range, uh, is open for your interpretation. Uh, but these are the general differences between the different land use types in this table. And then the rest of the pages in this chapter are description of what the form of those is recommended to be. So if we start with this commercial retail strip mall, um, as you, as you build your code, you may build in, uh, the requirement for certain colors and materials to be used. If you liked this red brick building with the, uh, that kind of, it isn't, it isn't a clock tower, but it looks kind of like a clock tower. If you liked that look and feel, you could make, put the code language to require something like that. And although it's a two-story building, you may allow a partial three-story or, or a two-and-a-half-story tower to occur in certain parts of the building.
Depends on the type of building. Which building?
And where?
Yeah. The tallest building in the whole city is probably Main Street.
No, the, the commercial districts and industrial districts are taller. I think they're in the sixty to seventy foot realm. On Main Street, you're at forty-five and then Main Street, South Gateway Zone.
Yeah.
Uh, so retail strip mall, I think mostly pretty familiar with that. The commercial mixed use, commercial village mixed use. Uh, this is still a commercial-related district, but, uh, and, and the intent is that it may have a mixture of uses. Uh, you may have ground floor retail, second floor office, um, multifamily residential could also be allowed on, on those upper floors. Uh, more flexibility to the developer to work in a mix of uses within that district. But then when you transition to the residential medium high, uh, we are moving more towards a residential-focused district. Uh, you still might have a small-scale retail station on the ground floor, but the second and third level if allowed, uh, would be residential use. Or it could be like the picture you see there, which is a two-story, uh, maybe duplex or townhome. And these just get more dense as you move up through the description. Residential medium, uh, more in the townhome, uh, type of product. How, what the townhomes look like, you can see two pictures that are very different from each other. They're both similar in size, but have a very different look and feel. That's up to you to determine your final calibration. Then you move into residential medium low, more of a traditional single-family lot. And then finally the mixed-use Lifestyle Center, which is the type of look and feel that, like Holiday Town Center has, where you have some kind of, uh, public space that is flanked by some, uh, destination-type development patterns, whether they're shops or restaurants, um, the places that people come as a destination rather than as a kind of a stop-through on the way through. Did that answer your question about the specific land use types that were on the map?
I think so.
Okay. Okay. After you've defined your land uses, and, and I do want to note, um, although the mixed-use Lifestyle Center only shows up in the southern half of the project, um, these other districts mostly are available across both of them, but you can nuance them a little bit. So whereas, um, residential medium, in some areas, you may want them or allow them to be twenty-five feet tall and others maybe you only want them to be twenty feet tall. You can change the height of those districts, um, differently across the place types because they are in different place types, even though it's the same land use district. So the, when you get into calibrating that, the tables allow you to very quickly and easily change how those products are, are built across the place types, even though it's the same land use. Okay, streets. Uh, the intent here is to not necessarily redefine the types of streets that you have in your, uh, approved city, uh, guidelines, uh, but rather to, uh, provide a mechanism for enhancing the pedestrian environment that is associated with it. So you can see on this map, we've recommended the location of certain key collectors. Um, but where the rubber meets the road, pun intended, is going to be all those local roads, those, those gray interior roads where neighborhoods are actually laid out. That's going to happen more in a parcel-by-parcel. neighborhoods are actually laid out. That's going to happen more in a parcel-by-parcel determination as developers get involved. But when they do, we'd like them to build this, the public rightsway in a certain fashion. We want them to include street trees, uh, site furnishings, appropriate lighting. And that all would be detailed in the Form Based Code as well. Uh, but this gives you some ideas on how some of those upgrades might occur and how they've occurred in other parts of the region.
It looks like we might have some integration here with the active transportation plan, because it's like bike lanes and.
Yes, yep. And the intent, whenever we have a, a multi-use trail or a trail intersecting with a high-capacity road, we want that to be as safe as possible. And so we provided some guidance from agencies like the FHWA on how that might happen. We recognize that UDOT gets involved with those state routes. Uh, but we want to give you some tools to use as you negotiate with UDOT to make those as safe and as appealing as possible. And you see it also occur on the open space map as I move to the next chapter. Uh, those trails, while they are on the transportation plan, are also on the open space plan. Because we do want to recommend that the open spaces are connected by the active transportation network. So they, they are included on both. And we, the ratios of the different park types here come from the recommendations of your, uh, parks plan. So there's a certain acreage for pocket parks, neighborhood parks, community parks and so forth. With the regional park being suggested for location along the sixteen-hundred South Corridor, it doesn't have to be there. But it makes some sense. It could be there because it's where regional traffic would be coming from. So that may make some sense. And as developers, as you work with developers to implement projects, that is when you would work with them on many of these other park types, neighborhood parks, and community parks would occur as part of that coordination. Uh, so that is the bulk of the actual implementation portion of the document. We have a few appendices that go through the public outreach summaries. Uh, we've, we've included the original data gathering that, that helped develop the scenarios here as well for your reference. Uh, this is where all the data is listed that backs up when, when Josh mentioned ten thousand new potential residents. All this data is what is used to come up with those calculations. And then the very end is, in appendix D is an outline for that potential Form Based Code. It is based on the Wasatch Front Regional Council's code template. You can see there's a lot of, uh, a lot of sections that need to be updated to calibrate it exactly for your needs. Depending on how much, how much that template is already matching what your vision may look like, it may go further quickly, or there may be sections that take more time to calibrate to, to meet your exact requirements. But all the information that you generally would want to put together is listed here. Uh, so with that, I think we are open to any other questions you may have?
Any questions for anyone? It's kind of a lot to digest.
Yes.
It seems like from a strategic perspective, it's really great.
Okay. If you don't have any questions, that's a lot of work. Job well done.
Thank you.
And by the way, good job to everyone for meeting with the community. Just try to make sure the communication is there.
Okay.
Hey.
Thank you. Alright. Someone like to open a public hearing?
Move to open the public hearing.
Okay, do you have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the public hearing is now open on item number two, the sixteen-hundred South area plan. And just like before, please state your name, address, when you come to the microphone.
Okay, Mindy Wright, eight fifty-three South, one, sorry, eight fifty-three East, one thousand South. Okay, I just have a couple of, oh, first of all, I want to thank the CRSA for this plan. It looks fabulous. I just have a couple of little questions about it. Um, concerning where the blob is, you know, the dot with the two eyeballs in there. I just wanted to see, um, on page five of the definition for mixed-use town center, it does say that they want to have more higher density around the town centers and then kind of go slowly out to, to lower density. But if you look at the blob at the bottom half, it's yellow, which is for single-family, and I think that that would probably need to be changed, just to meet the definition that we have of that. Um, the other thing is, is that, um, where we place the town center, and I, I don't know, maybe this is where I'm misunderstanding. Where they want to place it, it, it doesn't seem like it's, um, really accessible or convenient for, for that development area, just because on the west side of it is land that's not owned by us, it's owned by Spanish Fork. And then right across the street from that, which is, um, the Canyon Creek Parkway, is, uh, industrial zone, industrial is all owned by Spanish Fork. And so I just wonder if that is a good placement for our town center kind of area, where we want to have a little bit more high-traffic offer, not just for Springville citizens, but easily accept access by, um, you know, maybe a Spanish Fork or, you know. That Canyon Creek Road will be all the way from Provo to Spanish Fork, so maybe we want to try to move our town center into a more accessible place. So I think that's the only things that I want to say about the, the, the plan. But other than that, I think it looks well-laid out and and looks fantastic, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chad Tripp, eight forty-three West, fourteen fifty South. I'd like to thank Josh too for the presentation last Thursday. It was great for public input and kind of to discuss some things and see what was going on. Funny enough, the page forty-eight was the page that I wanted to kind of talk about. Uh, well, actually before that, um, don't mind me if I help myself here. So. The. Okay, so there's space here. My concern is, just like you, Karen, you had alluded to, trying to accommodate the concrete plant, not placing certain developments around that, just to try to avoid potential confrontation, potential issues. You know, the cows, they brought up the cows building apartments next to the, the cow farms and having flies. And I, you know, these were all comments that were brought up uh, last Thursday. My main question in regards to that is looking after those of us that that reside here, um, as residents, just like West, Westfield's, the the, the higher-density housing that went right into the backyard of some of the residents there. I believe that they had anticipated that, just like the, most of the area through there was all going to be single-dwelling homes, um, single-family homes, and not these taller townhomes, um, two, three-story buildings that are right in their backyard. Came, came to, you know, a distasteful thing for them. They, they were upset, right? And, and unfortunately, it was after the fact. Things kind of took place and, and that's where we're at. My ask would be the, the placement of the yellow here, which is your, your medium-low housing. And you have the placement of medium, medium-high. It's in the orange. I don't have the other paper here to, to define, but medium. So why not try to? I understand you can't choose what goes in around you, but you can if you're a new resident coming in. You see the development, you see what's going in around you. You, you buy your home knowing that that is what's there. We purchased our home years and years and years ago. We didn't know what would go in around us. We you expect growth and we, we support growth. It is, you know, we have to support that. We can't overlook that. We have to allow people to move in just like we did. Or not. We were residents of Springville for ten years. There's many of you that have lived here your whole life, so we're, you know, we kind of came in and took you up your space. Um, but my, my main ask would just be to just be more considerate of, of the residents that are currently here, and with the placement of the yellow, try to place that instead of, I know you're trying to to go from single-dwelling and, and try to incrementally in, you know, increase height around that, to blend it in. But why not be a little bit more accommodating to those of us that are here? Because as you know, if you look at the, down on page forty-eight, you can see the different information that's provided for uh, the different housing types. Uh, alright, so right here, so medium-low, which would be, I'd be right in my backyard. And there's many people that live on my street. They're not here. I don't know why they're not. I'm here because I, I want to have a voice. And I want to know what's going in in the backyard, but right now it is set for housing media, medium? Um, it's set for housing medium, which is two to three stories, thirty-six feet. Uh, row townhomes, townhouse. For that is because as, as you look at Westlake, the, the lots that they have there, the placement of the buildings are right up against the property line, and so they just, they go up and they just go straight up. And so you have three-story, two-to-three-story homes or, or townhomes there that are just right into your backyard. And I'm afraid that that's going to be the same case here. Whereas where you have the more of the housing medium-low, you may have a little bit more space in the back to, you know, to provide a, a little bit less impacting for us that, that have been here, um, in support of the city. That would be my main ask. And then second to that, it, it indicates that they have the potential of being rentals, right? So the single-dwelling homes are not, they're kind of protected to being a rental, whereas the townhomes and that, they're more open to be rentals. So, of course rentals are, can be a concern. Less of a concern, more so than like the structures themselves for me. And then the last thing on this would be the park placement. So the you have these little pocket parks, that I guess is what they're named. They really end up just essentially being a park for those that have, that are coming in, that are building, right? So it's right in the middle of their little development, and that's a park use that they have there. Uh, we did kind of fight for the, the park over there across from the elementary school in West, Westfield. And it looks great. It's nice. There's a really nice place structure going in there. So they did a great job there. You guys did a great job helping bring that in. Um, but having these little pocket parks, they don't really, they seem to benefit those that are kind of building around it rather than placing some of the more accessible, larger parks into, around the areas that are, that are developed, right? I'm just, I'm fighting for those of us that are here, the best I can. So maybe rearranging and trying to place some of these parks in areas that would help benefit those that are, that are here, rather than those that are coming. But again, my, my biggest ask would be to try to, and I know this is a thirty-thousand-foot overview. I know this is not set in stone, but as you know, if this is passed, these colors are there. The colors indicate certain housing that has a more likelihood of falling into place. Than as if, you know, we, we kind of come back after the fact, and you're like, well, that's how it was originally voted on in these, you know, color codes and these, this is what the ask was initially, so. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Oh, no, I, I was just gonna ask, are you suggesting that that, where your cursor is that that park be shifted more towards the pale-yellow area instead of towards where it is right now?
Well, like this one he- here in particular, where it is like a pocket park.
You said easier access to these.
Yeah, I mean, easier access because what that ends up being is a park that's that's in the middle of the new development, right? So you have your, your townhomes and that, and you place a pocket park in there. And that almost becomes an exclusive, you almost feel like it's an exclusive park for that development. Rather than being accessible for those that are, you know, that are around. Um, like you have these three large park areas. Couple smaller ones right here. But yeah, just the placement, being a little bit more geared to those of us that are here, and I'm this neighborhood in particular, because there's more development going around, I would suggest the same for these other ones if there was more development going around those. I'm not just fighting for my neighborhood. I'm, I'm fighting for really any of the area that's existing uh, that has any, any development going in around it. So, but yeah, park placement. Make a little bit more accommodating to, to existing homes. But again, the bigger thing is why place all the single-family homes all down in this area here? Which seems like there's a lot of that. And then you're putting the medium and medium-to-high in the, in the existing neighborhoods. I think that's about all I have, if that isn't enough. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, Commission. Hunter Huffman, one fifty-four C Street. Um, I, for one, I'm actually pretty excited that Form Based Code is actually making its way to Springville. Great job by CRSA for putting this together in a local context, but, um, I do think mirroring what was just said, uh, some of what could probably be addressed a little bit further is just looking at more, um, of the, the transect plan in terms of avoiding what happened over in the, um, Westfield's neighborhood plan. Uh, that, that probably could have been avoided in certain cases with the three stories next to people's backyards and things, but at the same time, I, I love the fact that Form Based Code's coming to Springville because it allows the market to dictate or to really guide Springville's needs or other, vice versa. And generally, I think, um, what it does is, I, I, I particularly would be excited about it because I wouldn't have to move too far from home to find a different housing type that's not a larger single-family home or an apartment. So allowing the market to be able to provide a variety of housing types versus the kind of what they explain, the typical zoning that only provides stacked flats, townhouses or single-family. This kind of addresses the myriad of different types that we, I think, generally need to start addressing just overall in, in Utah and the western United States, but also specifically here in Springville. So I think this is a great start, bird's-eye view, good plan to look closer at. Thanks.
Thank you.
Not seeing anyone else coming to the podium. I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, public hearing is now closed. Um, there's a number of things we could talk about in here. Who would like to kick it off? Or is everybody still digesting?
It's gonna take some digestion, I think. I, I do have a question. Um, Josh or the gentleman from CRSA, I forgot your name, sorry.
Remind us your name.
Kelly.
Thank you.
So Josh or Kelly, maybe you do. Um, I was curious about Mindy's comment, and if you have any comment about where that city center, that center area is placed. Do you have any comments about that? Because I think the point you made is a good one.
Yeah, it, I, I really have to go back to what Kelly said about the difference in character. Uh, the big retail node that we're looking for regional demand to support, it's really located at the intersection of twelve hundred West and uh, or Canyon Creek Parkway and sixteen hundred South, as well as at the freeway interchange and at the intersection of fifty-one and sixteen hundred South.
Is twelve hundred West the, the pink line next to?
No, that's nine fifty. Uh, the dark, uh, blue one that is to the west is, is Canyon Creek or twelve fifty West.
Oh, they're the same, okay.
Those are the areas meant to have larger trade areas or draw. And so that southern area is actually located to be more of an amenity to the neighborhood. Uh, also draw people as a destination, but we're relying more on its gravity than driving a lot of trips through it. But it also is on two, uh, significant, uh, thoroughfares. One is nine fifty West. Uh, goes right through the middle of it. And the future connection across fifty-one into Mapleton that will align, eventually align with Maple or their center street, uh, goes right through.
or their center street, uh, goes right through the middle of that east to west. And then on the, the west side in the Spanish Fork area, in that little bird's mouth, uh, particularly, Spanish Fork is already entertained and approved general plan amendments, and is looking at development plans for higher density residential.
Okay, so that was gonna be my next question, so we've already looked at the zoning around this area, so we know we're not gonna have a, some industrial building sitting next to our city center.
Correct.
So that, that addresses.
And in regards to the, having that, uh, low, a medium low directly adjacent to the, uh, mixed use lifestyle center, the case study in Holiday is actually really instructive, that it very quickly, uh, moves to larger lot, single family. And that's an appropriate transition at that scale, because these aren't, this is really a neighborhood or a village center, not a big retail center. And the code allows us to be far more granular than this diagram is. We can say, when you're at the edge of the mixed use lifestyle and you're at the edge of the medium low housing, these are the transitional standards, you have to, you know, set, make your setbacks a little more. So it's not, the hard edges are just an artifact of drawing different color blobs here. But the code will give us the opportunity to calibrate those in such a way that it, uh, meets all of our goals. It's, uh, the same thing, uh, in regards to some of the other questions about transitions.
I think that answered my question on that, do you mind if I ask one more?
Okay.
And it's Hunter's comment, or sorry, not Hunter's comment. Yes. On the, on the parks deal, so I have a question, my, so my son bought a townhome in American Fork, and they got a good one, because right in front of theirs is a nice grassy area, there's a little dog area, there's a playground area, and then there's a bunch of grass with lots of really green spots where people don't take care of their dog stuff. Anyway, um, it's, I was checking into it, and it's a public park, but it really does feel like it's a, it's a private park for the, for that townhome. I'm curious, is there any way to a, address that type of a thing? Or is it just, it's a public park? And I mean, I'm just, I'm looking at that little one that he was pointing out, and, and is there any way to move it?
Well, first.
And maybe they get, maybe I'm getting too granular on it?
Yes, that's the first answer, is that these are not saying this is where, it's saying that.
It's just gonna be, there's gonna be a park.
This type of park should be allocated to this general area.
That, that answers my question.
I think you can avoid some of that, just with your street design accesses to it, like Holdaway Park is an example in our own city where either you don't know what's there, you're not sure where to turn, or when you get to it, it's this hidden thing. But if you have a different access and homes facing a different way in the streets, then it's more open.
But Josh, we are saying that that would be a public space.
Yes, all of the forty-nine acres of green called out on this plan are publicly, uh, owned and maintained.
And it doesn't necessarily mean that that's the spot where this will be forever.
Correct, nor the shape, nor the.
That's great.
Yeah.
Just that, just that there will be acreage there set aside for a public park. And I think that answers that question as well, thank you.
Can we put something in place that says that we're not gonna do any of this until you finish community park?
I second that. Was that a motion?
Speaking of green spaces.
Or brown spaces.
Very brown.
Wing Park is done.
That's true. We enjoy it, and he's improving, but, um. I know you said that, you know, this is not where we get into small details. And so later on, when we get into the zoning and actual things, is when we would say, okay, this is what we want building heights to be, this is what we want setbacks to be, and we could maybe put in some different things to say if you're abutting a different use, maybe a slightly larger setback along that.
Yes, absolutely, to Chad's comment, I think we would have had, uh, way less issue with Westfield Central if we would have used the, uh, hundred foot town, standard townhomes on that west border instead of those loft homes. I don't think anyone would have had any issue with, uh, a townhome, an alley loaded, with an alley being in their backyard and then somebody's garage, and then forty feet later their townhome. Ten feet to a loft is a lot different. So I really stand by the fact that I think the medium designation is right there, because it does provide an appropriate transition between that more multifamily and the existing neighborhoods, and is in character with the type of development you could already see in the Westfields overlay. Like up by you, we have the Condi Farms, townhomes.
And they blend right in.
Uh, and so we would calibrate that such that while the permitted residential types are single family, townhome, twin home types, we would make sure that those setbacks, like you mentioned, are compatible, that we're not building them right in the backyard, that those are, uh, that they have backyards, that those transitions are appropriate, and those designs are done well. And that's what we can do here with the components of the form-based code, is really dictate, based on the location, how it works. Where in its typical code, it's much harder to do that, to say, hey, when you're in this, adjacent to this, it's this. And when you're adjacent to that, it's this, or when you're on this type of street, or in this kind of place type, like Kelly talked about, you have some different rules, and with this tool, we can do that. And that calibration will all happen as we do the zoning. So yes, I, I agree with Chad that if we make that orange, it's more likely that townhomes are gonna go there than if we made it yellow. But that we can make the townhomes, uh, or the twin homes, the types that are allowed there compatible and sensitive to the existing residents, just like they would be if they were building existing Westfields. And we felt that was an immensely better transition than the transition that would be allowed now to kind of the back end of a strip mall or kind of a retail establishment. So we'll be careful as we go through the calibration process of coming, of detailing the zoning out, that it addresses those adjacencies sensitively.
I, I wish there was something we could do for the existing single family that's right up against sixteen hundred, where there is no buffer, there's no transition, it's just going to be.
You're not giving them a new power line, that's.
That's exciting.
Yeah. Now, that, over in that, in the, in the, in the west, twelfth west, that is, yeah, that's definitely a concern.
So would it be appropriate or useful to put into this something along the lines of, we want to make sure that transitions are taken into consideration, the park placement is accessible to both existing and new? Is that where we, is this where we do that?
You could make any intent statements you'd like. I, I'm probably more comfortable, because I've been in it the whole time and understand how it works. And, but to make everyone more comfortable that is new to it or doesn't, or wants to, you know, ensure that those intents are communicated, that we can absolutely either, I, I think there may be some statements, it's been a minute since I've read every word in here, but there may be some statements about transitions, uh, but we can always add, uh, some small intent statements to help guide the future, uh, regulation drafting.
And given that this is a long-range plan and historical knowledge gets losses when people change positions?
Right.
How about you, Tim? Do you have some questions, feedback, anything you'd like to?
Nope, just got a lot of digesting today.
Thanksgiving. So I, I suppose the, a fair question at this point would be, are you ready to move on this tonight? Or do you need more time to come back to it? I don't think we're in any sort of deadline rush that we have to do this, are we?
We would like to, and, and have accelerated, uh, in the past couple of weeks, the mayor has asked us to do all we can to get it across the finish line, uh, with the currently seated council. He's conveyed it's not the end of the world if we don't. Uh, but that's been the intent of our schedule, is to take it to council next week, which is generally faster than we normally would, but we're trying to respond to that request.
Let me tell you what you can tell the mayor.
The mayor's communicated he'd like a shot at it soon.
I, 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 I'm ready to move forward with it, but I think, you know, I think the issue of, of the transition of existing, existing, uh, family, single family dwellings needs to be seriously taken into consideration. And I don't know how, how we do that particularly, other than maybe just amend this to state that the city council should seriously consider, you know, some language.
Put in our motion.
Yeah.
That's part of our recommendations.
But, but does that come, but does that come when we start getting into the tactical side of it?
It will, but I think what's being communicated that is, if there is that statement, that intent statement at the strategic level, it will be harder to forget to do that when we get to the tactical level.
I would feel more comfortable with that, because I don't want to get lost as you.
Yeah.
As I hope I'm here, you know, I hope we're all here, but yeah. I, it's better to have something written than rely on institutional memory.
Uh, so one question I have, this is one that we had last time, and it looks like it was also brought up in the neighborhood meeting, uh, infrastructure utilities, uh, the impact of all the, the growth between here and other projects. Are we moving at a pace where we can make sure that those utilities are upgraded and ready to go before we move on these things?
There's been significant work done, and it's really all found in the appendix to determine the, uh, we know how much sewer would come out of this max, how much water it would take, how much power generally, how many trips, vehicle trips. So all of those things have been assessed and, uh, compared against our current capital plans, how we've built the system to date. And we understand that there may be a tipping point, uh, wherein some development, some degree of development in this area may trigger some larger scale infrastructure upgrades, uh, such as our transmission, our sewer transmission line, I guess trunk line, uh, that runs along sixteen hundred West, may need an additional parallel line or may need to be upsized. But generally sewer is the most impacted utility that may be the closest in terms of having to do some additional large-scale capital projects. But we analyzed that through the planning process as part of the scenario plan to say, hey, is there enough development value coming out of this to justify the capital expenses that would be required to enable it? And that's all been, uh, analyzed in the fiscal impact, uh, information you see in the appendix and all of our, uh, all of our staff that's in charge of those different capital facilities have been involved in the process.
Do those numbers also include the impact of the lakeside landing?
Not cumulatively, because, uh, they are generally mutually exclusive, except at one place, and that's at the treatment plant. Uh, we're confident in our overall water source, uh, and supply, and our ability to secure more supply over time as we've planned. Uh, but the sewer plant is the one variable, because that's the only place where, well, I, these intersect, water supply and sewer treatment. Uh, the sewer plant is undergoing a, uh, plant study right now that hasn't been done for quite a long time, to determine really what the capacity of the plant is, and what the best way to accommodate additional capacity would be. Uh, but there may be a point where one or the other combined, uh, or even adding in the station area plan where it triggers some upgrades or expansion of capacity in the sewer plant.
Which is the sort of thing that takes, you know, a, a long-range planning. So do we need to do anything timing-wise on approving these to allow for that to fall into place in the right order?
That's what's really nice about this plan, is it doesn't, again, change any zones, change the land use, the general plan land use map, doesn't create any entitlements. And it has already been factored into, as I mentioned in the staff report, the transportation plan has already included these, hoping that it's gonna get adopted. So that analysis has been done, the sewer plant, uh, study is considering, is looking at all, at lakeside and all of these, uh, understanding what demand is anticipated to come out of those. So the wheels are already turning in terms of, uh, adapting and updating our long-term capital plans to accommodate these projections.
Okay. Thanks. Any other questions, David? Okay. Who wants to take a stab at it?
I'm gonna try.
Okay.
I know that you are much more eloquent, eloquent than me, let's see, all four of you can, uh, can make suggestions. I move to recommend approval of the sixteen hundred south corridor plan, with the note that consideration will be given to existing homeowners to create an appropriate transition that will not negatively affect those homeowners or the area they live in.
As well as parks.
As well as parks, as well as adjustment to make sure parks are accessible to all.
Sound about right? Okay, you have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. That is recommended to the city council, who will take a look at it next week. So if you're interested in attending both halves of the conversation, um, that would also be another place that you could have an input. Just want to say thank you for coming tonight, we don't usually have a lot of input from the public, so it's nice when we get some, thank you. Uh, anything before we adjourn?
No, this is our last, uh, what is this board, the Planning Commission? This is our last Planning Commission meeting, uh, for twenty twenty-three, so thank you all again for another year's service, and we'll see you in January.
Good one, thank you.
Thank you, thank you staff for all the work you put in.
Yeah, Merry Christmas.
Move to adjourn the meeting.
Seconded.
Aye.
Aye. Wait a second.
What?
We did, we did.
I got a second. It happened before the vote happened.